Well, hello, everybody, and welcome. It is wonderful to have a full house today for the two different topics, I think, that are bringing people out. But the first item of special business that we have tonight, I think, has brought most of you out. So, um, welcome. And for those of you who are former council members and mayors and other elected officials, welcome back. And it's great to have you here. We start our meeting with an invocation, which we observe by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, white and nation, under God, indivisible, with authority and justice for all. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Corliss.
Here.
Halliburton.
Here.
Ralph.
Here.
Nat.
Here.
Ted.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And next up, we have some minutes for approval.
Madam Mayor, I move approval for the minutes for the strategic planning session and regular meetings on January 28, 2025.
Second. The motion second, Clerk?
Ted.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Nat.
Yes.
All in favor, motion through.
And now we will move on to special business. The most special business of the evening is to recognize former Councilmember Jerome Mapp. I'm going to pass this over to Jimmy Halliburton, who has a couple of things to say.
Yeah, I'll just start off. I'll have a few more words later, and I'll hand it over to our Director Jennifer Stevens to give a bit of a presentation, tell you a little bit about Councilmember Mapp's history. I do want to say just how big of an honor it is to be here celebrating you. It's not very often that you get a chance to celebrate your heroes. And Jerome, you're certainly one of my heroes. And the more I learn about you, the more I appreciate all the work that you've done. So, um, thank you for being the man of the hour tonight, for what you've done for our city. And I'll have some more words for you in a second, but I'll hand it over to Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. I'm Jennifer Stevens, Director of Arts and History for the City. And hi to all of you. Many of you I haven't seen in a long time, but it's great to see your faces back in chambers tonight. I have the honor of introducing our... Hang on a second. Thank you, Amanda. I have the honor tonight of introducing our special guest, distinguished guest, Mr. Jerome Mapp. I've been admiring Mr. Mapp for many years, back in 2002, when I moved back to the city of Boise. My friends and colleagues on council will know that I've been a fan of city council and watching city council for many years, which is kind of embarrassing, but true. And I would write Christmas cards to every city council member and mayor, saying, "Thank you for your service." So, I didn't actually know Mr. Mapp back then, but I certainly was watching him and admiring him from afar. And when I did finally meet Mr. Mapp a couple of years ago, when I was honored to take the position that I'm in today, he was serving on an advisory task force that I'll talk about in a minute. But it is an honor tonight to have this opportunity to honor you and the service that you've done to the city, as well as for the state of Idaho and the region, as we start to kick off Black History Month in the city. So, a little bit about Mr. Mapp. He was born in Chicago, Illinois. He was educated in Illinois schools, where he developed an interest in architecture. He opted, a few years later, for Idaho State University. Lucky us. He graduated from there in Pocatello, with degrees in architecture and sociology. We are, as I said, very fortunate that he chose Idaho. Over the years, the Arts and History Department has conducted several oral histories with Mr. Mapp. And in these, we can trace the roots of his deep commitment to public service and to our city and our region back to the early '70s. 1973 and 1974 were pivotal years for Mr. Mapp. Upon graduating from Idaho State, he joined the University for Action, which is like today's AmeriCorps Vista program. He focused his leadership there in community service through the lens of architecture and planning. He also met his wife Lynn, a lifelong educator and writer. They married in August of 1973, and they have three sons together, Adam, Russell, and Andrew. Let's see. He brought his love of music to the airwaves, hosting shows on KWIK in Pocatello and on KBSU in Boise, playing country, jazz, and R&B. In 1974, he became Pocatello's first planner, and he started the city's planning department. This was the beginning of a 50-year-long career in planning. In 1980, Mr. Mapp moved to Boise, and he joined that state of Idaho as a facility planner, where he stayed until 1982, when a design review position came up at the city of Boise. Now, Mr. Mapp applied for this position, and he didn't hear anything for a while. So, he went to City Hall every couple of weeks to see if they'd hired anybody. And by October, they still hadn't hired anybody. At that point, he decided to change his strategy and start going down to City Hall every couple of days, until they made a decision. By November 1982, Mr. Mapp was hired, and this was the first of many jobs he would hold with the city of Boise. During the mid-1980s, Mr. Mapp started his own consulting business called Planning and Facility Management. Over the next 50 years, he worked in a planning capacity with numerous Idaho jurisdictions, including Elmore County and the cities of Horseshoe Bend, Nampa, and Caldwell. Throughout his career, Mr. Mapp asked himself, "What can I do to help the city?" And as a planner, he also often started addressing whatever project or issue he took on with a vision of what could be or what could happen. Take, for example, the Bass Block on Grove Street in downtown Boise. His vision was brought to life by his master plan in 1988, and it showcases how public spaces can foster community and culture. His visionary leadership eventually led him to consider applying for a vacancy on Boise City Council in 1992. Mr. Mapp was among, let's see, 64 applicants for this position. Again, he asked himself, "How can I serve, and what can I bring to the table?" At the time, and this is, of course, still true today, Boisians were concerned with growth and with planning. Using his planning background, he focused his presentation on transportation and the need for the city and region to start looking at the impact of moving people around the area without using automobiles. He even brought the idea of light rail transportation. That vision struck a nerve with leadership, the press, and the people of Boise, and led to his appointment to city council in 1993, making history as Boise's first African-American city council member. During his 13-year tenure, Mr. Mapp's accomplishments and widespread impact on our city and community life are remarkable and can be seen and experienced in everyday life. Some of the folks here on this screen are in the room with us today, which is exciting, and go to show how important his work was here. One of the first motions he ever made on city council was to designate Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a city holiday. I quote, "We have a responsibility to stand up for what is right and makes sense and be a leader for other cities in Idaho." The motion passed in 1993. Jerome and his family also spent many weekends in Boise parks for sports events. Jerome realized that not a single one of them had signage or addresses. So, he worked to provide addresses for all Boise parks, facilitating easier access to the public, as well as to the emergency services needing to respond to 911 calls that originated within our parks. He also supported the relocation of Engine 2295, that many of us know today as Big Mike, to the Boise Depot, which is celebrating 100 years this April. He also provided these welcome signs. These are entry signs to Boise that were designed by artist Ward Hooper. Other major accomplishments include bringing awareness to and pushing for the expansion of public transportation, widening sidewalks and enhancing streetscape along Capitol Boulevard, establishing Career Jump Start, a youth internship program for high school students, expanding Boise's recycling program to include medical and electronic waste, supporting expansion of the Green Belt, the Boise Park System, Boise pools, including Ivy Wild Pool that was constructed while he was on council. He supported the adoption and implementation of the 2001 Foothills Levy, as well as the Percent for Art Ordinance, which today funds our public art. And finally, he supported youth art projects, among others. His commitment to the city of Boise, as well as to the region, led to his appointment on various boards and commissions over the past five decades, both during and outside his time on city council. Some of these have also included serving on review committees for public art installations, excuse me, the Airport Commission as a city council liaison, the Board of the Capital City Development Corporation, the Board of Valley Ride, which is now Valley Regional Transit, the Board of the Association of Idaho Cities, and, most recently, the Irma Hayman House Advisory Task Force. The House, as many of you know, is located on River and Ash Streets in Boise's historic River Street neighborhood, adjacent to Pioneer Pathway, formerly known as Lover's Lane, and adjacent to the Boise River. Unsurprisingly, Mr. Mapp's involvement in improving connection to the neighborhood at 11th and Myrtle to 8th and Front Streets for pedestrians and bicyclists started long ago. With that, I am so honored to hand this over to Mayor Lauren McLean, who will, I think, work with Mr. Halliburton to say a few more words. But again, it's my honor, and I thank you for your service, Mr. Mapp.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. I'm going to ask that Councilmember Jimmy and Councilmember Halliburton start this, because I'll make some remarks and then read a proclamation. But thank you for that overview, Jennifer. It was a great overview of the impact that Councilmember Mapp has had.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. You know, one of the interesting things about that overview is that it covered a lot, but it also barely covered anything that Jerome was able to accomplish during this 13-year period of time. Part of the process in getting to honor Jerome is that he and I got to sit down and do a StoryCorps interview and talk a little bit about his time on council. And it was really interesting to do that from the perspective of a current council member and a past council member. And one of the things that I really learned throughout that process is how many incredible things I've inherited from previous councils and previous council members, like Councilmember Mapp. So many things that I'm working on today that he started long ago. And there's a saying, "History doesn't repeat itself, but it rhymes." And throughout this StoryCorps interview, there were just so many times where my cheeks just started to hurt, because I was smiling so much, listening to Jerome tell these stories, and being able to relate in some ways. And in some ways, you know, certainly it was different. And if you listen to StoryCorps, does anyone listen to StoryCorps? They played on NPR, and there's always at least one moment where you cry. And during this interview, I didn't cry, but there was a point where I did start to get emotional, and I think it was really when I started to better understand the weight and the responsibility that Jerome held in this position, not only because it was a position of leadership, but also to be the first African-American in this position, and the extra responsibility and the extra weight that that carries. And I know there were certainly challenges along the way. And I began to get a little bit of a better glimpse of what that was like. One of the things, luckily, when you do have weight to carry is you typically have some people to help you along the way. And I can't get through honoring Jerome without actually honoring somebody else as well, because as Jerome was a leader here on city council, back in 1993 through 2006, I believe, I was going to school at Eagle Elementary and experiencing another leader that I only know today still, like thousands of other students, as Mrs. Mapp, who was my fourth grade reading teacher. So, as Jerome was creating impact here, Mrs. Mapp was creating future leaders and impacting thousands of kids across the Treasure Valley. And so, Jerome, I will be thanking you here in a second, but I want to take a moment to thank your wife, Mrs. Mapp, as well, and if we could give her a round of applause for her service. My mom's a teacher as well, so you have to honor the teachers. One of the things that I had the honor of asking Jerome for was if he had any advice for me as a council member, or even for life after council. And this was maybe my favorite part of the interview, because what Jerome told me is that "My advice for you is that it's never too late to change your mind," and that "It's always important to continue to take more information until it becomes time to make a decision. And then, even at that moment, you still have to be willing and open to think about something a little bit differently with that information." I thought that that was great advice, not just for a city council member, but for all of us. And if that wasn't enough, Jerome gave an example of doing this. And Jerome, if I get the story wrong, please correct me. Jerome's very first motion that he made on city council, I can't remember what it was for, it was probably to approve a land decision or to deny a land decision, but he made the motion. And then, what happens after you make a motion is all the other council members, they go down the line, and they weigh in, and they say their opinions. Hopefully, they get on the press if they see something good. And so, everyone goes down the line, and they say all their things. And when it comes time to vote, Councilmember Mapp voted against his own motion. It's never too late to change your mind, which I just absolutely love. There was other pieces of advice that I get to hold on to. Special moments for me, at some point, that interview will come out on StoryCorps, stored in the Library of Congress, and it's been submitted there, and will be available for the rest of time and for the rest of everybody else to listen to. But for now, I get a couple of weeks before it gets published, where I get to cherish every single one of those moments, every single one of those stories, and everything that I learned along the way. So, as I hand this back over to the mayor to say some words and read a proclamation, there's just a couple of last things that I want to thank you for. I want to thank you for the impact that you made at the city of Boise. After your 13 years, Boise was a better place for you serving. It was a more welcoming place. It was a more inclusive place. It was a place that focused on sustainable growth and transportation, empowering youth, empowering arts, building pools, so many things that I care about personally that I've gotten to inherit from you. So, thank you for the impact that you made on this city. And then, I also want to thank you for planting seeds and creating ripples. This was one of the other things that you told me during your interview, of how important it is to share your ideas and to plant seeds and to allow them to grow. And I just want to let you know that after 13 years and more of planting seeds in Boise, in Caldwell, and Pocatello, all across the state, those ripples are continuing to spread, and that impact is continuing to live on. So, Jerome, it's an honor, as I said earlier, to honor you today.
When Councilmember Halliburton suggested that we take this evening not only to mark the first council meeting of Black History Month, but most importantly, to mark the impact of our first African-American council member, I thought it was a great idea. And I didn't realize when I said, "Yes, we should, of course, do this," that it would bring so many people out, that it would create this opportunity to have a story told. I can't wait to listen to that interview, and what a lucky opportunity that was to be able to interview Councilmember Mapp. But to create that opportunity to have the story told through StoryCorps, that all of us will be able to enjoy into the future, once it's available. But also, I did not realize that it would also create this chance for me and so many others to reflect back on the impact that you've had, not just on our city, but on our lives. And as I think about, for me, the time when I moved here, right out of college in 1998, you were serving on city council. And I always heard your name, as I got more involved in the city, from Elaine in particular, she's sitting behind you, and Jerome Mapp, planning, Jerome Mapp, planning. And the different impacts that you'd had, both on city council, but importantly, on communities around the state and on Boise, and the way we think about planning, that in this opportunity to think about and honor the work that you've done, has actually created an opportunity for me to reflect back on the impact that you've had on the city, and frankly, on my life as well, because of all that you've done for this place that we love. And the mayor of Caldwell's here tonight, the current mayor of Caldwell, he texted me earlier, said, "Just going to warn you, I'm coming to..." I was like, "How'd you know Jerome Mapp?" And former Mayor Coles is here, welcome back. And council members that served with you, that picture just took me back of those council chambers with that mural. But that council that you served with, you served at a time that I would say was so pivotal for this city. And as Jennifer said, you believe that we should lead, not only for Boise, but for the state. And so, I'd say that that time was pivotal, not only for the city and all of us that have been able to build on the work that you did and benefit from it, but for the state, because the work that you did to ensure that we're a welcoming place, that you laid the groundwork for us to think bigger than we were or are, in terms of how we can plan transportation and other issues. The issues that you grappled with today, as I often say, it's so many things, are the issues that we're grappling with today. And you demonstrated in your tenure what Boisians continue to demonstrate, and that is that we love this place, we care for its people, we'll fight like hell for the values that we hold, and to leave that mark, to ensure that we have a city that is befitting of us today, but most importantly, the people that come after us. And you did that. And you've continued to do that since you retired from council. And I love hearing Jimmy talked about the impact that you had on him and his thinking about how he's a council member. I know that you've done that for so many other people, both in the field of planning, up here on this dais through the years since you left. And I gather and venture to guess, in so many other areas of your life as well. So, thank you for all that you've done, the book of work that you've done in the state and in the city, because it does live on, not just in the stories, but as we saw even in the pictures, in the places our kids play today, in the way that we live, and the vibrancy and quality of community we have, lives on because of the work that you did. And so, it's really an honor. I have a proclamation that I will read and then present to you and your family. This is one of those things that mayors get to do, and I really think that everybody's starting to play with me, because the print gets smaller and smaller and harder and harder to read, and this one has so much stuff in it, because you've had such an impact. But I look forward to reading it. Bear with me, everybody, and thank you, Jerome. Whereas Jerome Mapp was appointed to Boise City Council in 1993 and elected in 1994, becoming Boise's first-serving and elected African-American city council member. And whereas Jerome served as Boise city council member for three terms, from '93 to 2005, as well as acting mayor in February 2004, before appointing Carolyn Turtleing-Payne as interim mayor. And whereas Jerome served with integrity, dedication, and commitment toward a long-term sustainable vision for Boise and led efforts in the following areas: the establishment of the Valley Regional Transit and expansion of public transportation, the expansion of the Boise Green Belt, the expansion of city parks and pools, including the construction of Ivy Wild, the adoption and implementation of the 2001 Foothills Levy, providing addresses for all Boise parks, making it easier for community members to find them and access them. And you provided consistent advocacy for regional rail and sustainable transportation connecting our Treasure Valley cities. And whereas during this time on Boise City Council, Jerome was a tireless advocate in creating a welcoming and inclusive community, leading the following efforts in the arts, history, cultural, and community events, and youth empowerment, the creation of welcome entry signs in Boise and signage for our parks, establishing Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday as a city holiday, passing and implementing the Percent for Public Art Ordinance, creating programs for youth internship and art projects, and working with the city as a planner to establish the Bass Block. And whereas after nearly 13 years of distinguished service on the Boise City Council, Jerome has remained involved with city of Boise efforts, including serving on review committees for public art and serving on the Irma Hayman House Advisory Task Force. And whereas February is Black History Month, an important annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans, and a time for recognizing their central role in our U.S. history. And whereas the city of Boise wishes to recognize Jerome Mapp for his significant contributions and ongoing impact in the city of Boise, the state of Idaho, and on U.S. history, I, Lauren McLean, Mayor of Boise, hereby proclaim February 4, 2025, as Jerome Mapp Day in the city of Boise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Kind of throw this away, because it's a lot of things right here. One of the first things I want to say is that I thank my Lord, Savior Jesus Christ. There you go. I'm sorry. I thank my Lord, Savior Jesus Christ, for sustaining me in this journey. When I look at 53 years, when I started out, I was not going to be a city planner. I wanted to be an architect. But something that I learned over the years is that architects build buildings or design buildings, planners plan cities. And it's a major difference because of the impact that you described that we can have on a community. I'm thankful through this day. I'm thankful for my wife and Mapp, that Councilmember Halliburton knows well. I also am thankful for my sons. My sister-in-law, Shirley Brown, is here, who came to my first swearing-in as a council member, and she's here today as well. I'm thankful for my extended family, my friends, the citizens of Boise, who supported me through conversations and votes for three terms. But last but not least, I'm thankful for Mayor Brent Coles, who presented me before the city council, and the council members that confirmed my selection to be on the city council. And I want to say their names. I know that Mike Weatherall is here, and he was a mentor, but also a friend. Sarah Baker and House Rath, and Paula Forney. All of them were there. They voted, and we worked together, even though we didn't always agree. We put the city of Boise first before anything else. Just briefly, this journey started in 1973, as an intern with a traffic engineer for the city of Pocatello. Six months later, I transferred over to the engineering department, where I was drawing, construction drawings for road improvements. Then, a year later, with my colleague Jerry Mason, we started the planning and research department with the city of Pocatello. That was the beginning of a career that even at that time, wouldn't imagine that it would have been 53 years. Working on projects as a staff member, consultant, and a city council member allowed me to lead and participate in positive change in our community. As mentioned, I try to share my vision with the community, even when people didn't agree, in some cases even mocked, because I would come up with an idea, a vision, that wasn't necessarily popular at the time, such as light rail. But that's something that I saw that we needed to do. I won't belabor the issue tonight, my background, because you all have identified that. And what I would say is that I think this is the best city in the country. I think our vision has been directed for the betterment of the citizens of Boise. And I thank you very much. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to come tonight and the recognition that you provided to me today. Thank you.
Jerome, before you sit down, I got one more thing over here, over here. So we are honored also at the Department of Arts and History to give you a gift. This is a beautiful piece of art that was done by one of our local artists by the name of Kirsten Furlong. She is an African American artist who works over at the School of the Arts at Boise State University. And we are honored to give you this beautiful piece of artwork by Kirsten as a thank you and a token of our appreciation for the work you've done. Thank you. I'm going to propose that we take five minutes and we'll take a quick break. That way people can chat for a moment. You can feel free to leave without interrupting the council meeting unless you want to stay for the entire thing. But everyone can go at ease. We'll have a couple of minutes and we'll get back up here soon. Calling Jordan and Kathy. Welcome back, everybody. So we have a couple more appointments that we are going to work through. Our folks here, I should, Alicia Records, I didn't see Alicia. Oh, my gosh, I, I'm sorry. I walked right by you, Alicia. And then Luke Howard, the Ethics Commission. Latonia Haney Keith, I know is not here, and Chris Stanley. Okay, um, I'm going to start with the appointment of Alicia Records. I want to thank you for volunteering to be on the Boise Municipal Healthcare Trust. When I was told that you were willing to do this, I was also told that you were a perfect person for it. So thank you very much for being a part of this. And with this, this will be a two-year term ending December 31st, 26.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the appointment of Alicia Records to the Boise Municipal Healthcare Trust for a two-year term ending December 31st, 2026?
Without objection. Thank you so much. Would you like to say anything since you're here and have stayed here? You don't have to if you don't want to. Thank you. All right. And now I'd like to reappoint Luke Howard to the Ethics Commission for a four-year term.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Luke Howard to the City of Boise Ethics Commission for a four-year term ending February 2029?
Without objection. I want to thank Luke for his service he's already provided and the willingness to continue to serve this Ethics Commission is, is key to ensuring that as the city grows, that we're wrestling with issues that might be out there. We have a group of volunteers who will weigh issues and make decisions. And it helps us be as transparent and ethical as possible at the city. So thank you, Luke. And now Latonia Haney Keith. It's an honor to reappoint her for a five-year term to the Capital City Development Corporation.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Latonia Haney Keith to the Capital City Development Corporation for a five-year term ending February 2030?
Without objection. Haney Keith is currently Chair of our Urban Renewal District. She puts a lot of work into the role and I appreciate her service and willingness to continue. And finally, I want to thank Chris Stanley for his continued willingness to serve on the P and Z Commission. So I'm proposing reappointing him for a four-year term.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Chris Stanley to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term ending February 23rd, 2029?
Without objection. All right, thanks, everybody. We have, the city has many, many commissions and committees that are, that are powered by resident volunteers. And they do a lot of the hard work of the city and bring the voice of the community to it. And I just appreciate all these folks and everybody else that serves. We next have Jesse Lyle. Oh, there you are. Welcome, Jesse, with revised findings from an appeal of CVA 2425.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As you said, this is revised findings for the appeal of CVA 2425, which was denial of, from the Planning and Zoning Commission on a variance request to deviate from the general site and building design form standards. This should sound familiar. This was last before you on January 14th. And a city council approved the variance request and instructed the planning team to return with revised findings to reflect that decision, which are in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
There are no questions, I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the revised findings on CVA 24-25 and ask that the records show that they reflect the discussion and decision of council.
Second. Motion second, clerk?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
Horliss?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Next up, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I ask that the travel request, item C1, be removed from the consent agenda?
Second.
Uh, I think that's just a unanimous consent request.
Yep, without objection. All right.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, we have motion, second discussion. Uh, with that, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
Horliss?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of item C1 on the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion, a second discussion? Clerk?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis?
No.
Horliss?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Five in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Now we will move into ordinances. First reading?
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinance on the first reading be read by number and title only and filed for the second reading calendar?
Without objection.
ORD-6-25, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title IX, Chapter V, Electrical Code, addressing code compliance, inspector certification, penalty for non-compliance, open garage ceiling requirements and providing effective date. ORD-7-25, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title V, Chapter 12, Fire Prevention Code, to add new sections to address code compliance, extensions, fluorine-free suppression foam, wall separations, requirements for lithium batteries and to renumber and providing an effective date.
And we have ordinances on third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD-2-25, ORD-3-25, ORD-4-25 be dispensed with, and the record reflect that they have been read the third time and in full.
Second.
Clerk?
Dead.
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
Horliss?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. ORD-2-25, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title IX, Chapter I, Article A, Building Code, updating accessibility requirements to align with the state, allowing for an additional extension period, updating non-compliance provisions and providing an effective date. ORD-3-25, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title IX, Chapter I, Article B, One and Two Family Dwelling Building Code, to create alignment with state code, creating additional extension and amendment compliance provisions and providing effective date. ORD-4-25, an ordinance amending Boise City Code Title IX, Chapter IX, Energy Conservation Code, creation exemptions for certain accessory buildings, create further alignments with state code, allowing for certain visual inspections, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing effective date.
Madam Mayor, I move that ORD-2-25, ORD-3-25 and ORD-4-25 be approved?
Second.
Clerk? Dead.
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
Horliss?
Yes.
Halliburton?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move into the public hearing. Next, we have, I just wanted to check, I've got some folks signed up. I'll go through the order of things. And but I was just checking our list because this is an appeal. So only folks that were parties of record are able to testify tonight. And there are a couple of people that signed up on the sheet that I don't have a record of you having testified in the past. So I'm going to call, I'm going to call your name. And then if you've got a question about that, you can come over here and see council staff and they'll help you figure this out. Is it Martin Schumpf? Schumpf? Jim Pickett? Oh, great, okay. And then was the neighborhood associate, okay, great. And then Larry Kirk? Great, all right. And then if, is it Martin Schumpf? I could be saying this very, on, from Four Mesa Vista Road? No? Okay. All right. Well, then it looks like, uh, we are good with everybody else. And thank you, Larry, for letting me know. Appreciate it. With that, we will first hear from, uh, city staff, Rachel Farrell, and then from the appellant, Karen Moore. Then the applicant, Ethan Mansfield. After that, we'll hear from Jim Pickett with Depot Bench. And then I'll go into public testimony for folks that have either signed up here or if you are party of the record, party of record and you're here to testify, we'll hear from you too. If I don't call your name on this sheet of paper, if you didn't sign up already, just go ahead as we get to that part of the evening and sit up front so we can move through folks. All right, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Rachel Farrell. And before you is the appeal of the Design Review Commission's approval of DRH 24-00250. The project is located at 1095 South Federal Way on a 2.31 acre site in the MX3 Zone. The site is located on the corner of Federal Way and Kootenay Street and is adjacent to commercial development to the north and single-family residential development to the west. The applicant is proposing to construct a new five-story mixed-use building with 194 residential units and commercial space. Ingress and egress to the site would be taken from Pico Street and Federal Way as shown here. Detached sidewalks are proposed along all street frontages and parking would be located in a subterranean two-level podium parking with a second level of parking located at street grade. The building would be constructed to be four stories along Pico Street and five stories along Federal Way. The applicant explored a number of articulation techniques, modulated roof lines and balconies, window treatments and everything, window treatments to meet design standards for the citywide design review guidelines. As part of the project's background, there was a planning and zoning and city council approval in 2023 submitted by the same applicant for a rezone height exception to 59 feet and a development of a mixed-use project with 120 residential units. Since then, the applicant submitted a new design application for a similar project under the Modern Zoning Code, which was reviewed and approved by the Design Review Commission at the September 11th and November 13th, 2024 hearings. On November 21st, 2024, an appeal was received on the decision to approve the project. Under the Design Review Commission's authority, they conducted the project. They concluded that the project would maintain and enhance the built environment. With this application, they can make the findings that the project has safe vehicle patterns for pedestrians and cyclists, appropriate landscaping and screening, the grading, drainage and utilities minimized, appropriate building massing, facade articulation techniques, openings and facades and appropriate use of exterior materials. It is also under the Design Review Commission's purview to find that the project meets the goals and policies of the city's adopted code and plans while following appropriate procedures. The appellant submitted four grounds for appeal that can be summarized by the following. Failure to promote general welfare of present residents and protecting the character of the residential area, limiting the height to three stories, incompatibility with character when Pico Street contains five one-story, single-family homes and a five-story apartment building that would create negative impacts on the surrounding neighbors with respect to privacy, noise, overshadowing and traffic. Along with the response to the appeal grounds provided in the council packet, staff will address each of these issues in the presentation. In response to appeal issue one, a previous project was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council in 2023, as previously mentioned, for a similar mixed-use development, which included a rezone and height exception. Staff wanted to point out that these findings had to be made in order for the use height and rezone to be approved, which includes preserving public welfare. The current proposal today is a similar project scope, but was reviewed under the Modern Zoning Code. The Design Review Commission can make the findings to approve this project, which in their purview protected the public interest by reviewing the application for such considerations. In response to appeal issue two, under the Modern Zoning Code, the subject site was rezoned to MX3, which allows for higher, higher density development to a maximum height of 70 feet. And under section 110203.3, the code calls out use-specific form standards for each mixed-use zone and that in an MX3 zone, the use shall be located in a building at least four stories in height. As such, the Design Review Commission found that the project meets this policy and could approve the project. In response to appeal issue three, impacts to the adjacent neighborhood were taken into consideration as one of the Design Review findings and was found to be addressed by stepping the building down to four stories along Pico Street and designing the building with walk-up style units and excluding any of the commercial uses along this street. Neighborhood transition standards were not required as a part of this project. These standards are triggered when a mixed-use development abuts a lower-density residential zoning district. The adjacent single-family dwellings on the other side of Pico Street are located in the same zone as the proposed development, which is MX3. Therefore, the standards did not apply. The applicant demonstrates that the facades on Pico Street soften the pedestrian realm and interface with adjacent single-family homes. Therefore, the Design Review Commission could make this finding. In response to appeal issue four, as part of the site design findings, safe pedestrian networks that minimize conflicts between pedestrians and vehicle traffic was reviewed and considered. Detached sidewalks along all street frontages, safe pedestrian crossings and amenities for cyclists have all been proposed. The use, the use-specific form standards for MX3 zone call out that for residential uses, each building facade contains ground floor residential uses that should be constructed within 15 feet of each street-facing property line and occupy at least 50% of the width of the primary street frontage. And that each building facade with the ground floor non-residential use have at least 50% be occupied by windows or transparent building features through which activity can be viewed. The applicant has demonstrated that these form standards have been met, which mitigate harmful impacts to the public. Additionally, a traffic study submitted by ACHD concluded that the project would meet their district goals and policies with site-specific conditions related to road widening, widening along Pico Street and new traffic patterns on Federal Way and Kootenay Street. As such, the Design Review Commission could make this finding. That concludes the summary of the appeal grounds and staff's response. Please note that council has the following options when reviewing the appeal. Council can either find error in the review body decision, which may be reversed or modified, or if no error is found, the appeal shall be denied and the decision upheld. And for council's review, uh, here is a summary of the Design Review findings, but can be provided in further detail upon request. If the council finds error, it shall be based on one or more of the following criteria. So as outlined in the council packets, the Design Review Commission was able to make the findings and found that the project is in compliance with Boise City- and found that the project is in compliance with Boise City Code. So the planning team would recommend that city council deny the appeal. Thank you. And this concludes staff presentation. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I would really like to better understand the interplay between, it seems like we've approved some entitlements under Legacy Code on this, but we've evaluated some of these standards against the Modern Zoning Code. Can you better help me understand how we're looking at both codes here?
Madam Mayor and council member, the, uh, the approvals that I was speaking about in the presentation were, yes, reviewed under Legacy Code. Due to the zone that, uh, was previously zoned in this location, in order to have a project of that density, a rezone was required and in order to meet a height requirement, um, for the project that they are proposing, a height exception was also proposed. So in the same location, a similar project was reviewed by Planning and Zoning and City Council. Um, but since the Modern Zoning Code changed over and the, um, site was automatically upzoned as a result to MX three, the applicant came back with a similar project, but, um, under the Modern Zoning Code, um, went to the extent of the, um, height and, uh, I guess, density requirement per that new zone.
Is it fair to say that under the Modern Zoning Code, the applicant is not only entitled, but required to, build a building at least forty-five feet in height in the MX three zone?
Madam Mayor and council member, that is correct. So the forty-five feet that maybe you're referring to is the four-story height requirement. So in the new Modern Zoning Code, the MX three standards and the use-specific form standards require that buildings be at least four stories in height.
I'm reading in the preface of the design standards, it says the following, that if there's a conflict between the design standards and city code, including the zoning code, that the zoning code controls, is that correct?
Yes, generally, the more stricter standard, um, as written, um, in our procedures in the code would apply. So if the stricter standard is in the code, then that would apply.
Uh, is it your opinion that the design commission, or well, what role did density and height play in our design standards versus other land use considerations that might come under zoning code?
Madam Mayor and council member, Nash, actually Josh Wilson can answer this question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So, uh, council member Nash, you're correct. In the, um, Designer View Commission's purview and authority is set forth in code. It outlines their due, their duties, their jurisdiction, their authority. As Rachel already mentioned, they do have specific findings that they need to make related to site design, building design, and compliance with adopted plans. Further in that section, their authority is limited. Uh, it is limited to be specifically prohibited from requiring reduction in density, reduction in floor area ratio, or other regulations set forth uh, in the table of dimensional standards. And that would be height setbacks, things like that.
Did you read that from somewhere?
That is in the code, that is, yes.
The, the, you have a citation for that?
It is eleven oh five oh three point four, Designer View Commission, that is subsection B limitations.
Could you repeat it?
Eleven dash oh five.
Could you repeat what the statement was?
Absolutely. Uh, the DRC is specifically prohibited from requiring reduction in density, reduction in floor area ratio, or other regulations set forth in Table eleven oh four point two residential districts or Table eleven dash oh four point three mixed-use industrial and open land districts. And it goes on to say that cannot be shown to be required by reason of public safety, health, or destruction or demutation of property values.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, question for staff. First of all, thank you. I think that was a really, um, detailed presentation. I appreciate the, the report. Um, as you know, we have a very strict criteria when it comes to evaluating appeals. Um, is there, I guess with that in mind, is there anything that Design Review approved that from your opinion is in violation of their authority or of city code?
Madam Mayor and council member said, no, from staff's position, um, we, the findings that the Designer View Commission made was in their purview. Um, nothing that they, um, there wasn't anything out of order in which they review the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll hear from the, uh, appellant, Karen, Karen Moore. Welcome.
Uh, good evening, Mayor McLean and members of city council. Um, I'm a little nervous, so I'm gonna try to read off the paper that I prepared. Um, my name's Karen Moore and I reside at one zero zero seven South Pico Street. I'm one of the appellants in opposition to the Design Review Commission's approval of this project. Additional parties to the appeal include Pico Street residents Victoria Purdy, who's here this evening, Laura Robinson, who I believe is participating via Zoom, and Kim Binder, as well as residents from nearby Mesa Vista Drive, Hannah Cronbaugh, Monique Ray, Christie Dannenhauer, Lauren Noble, Shelley Noble, Shelley Lund and Bill Poindexter, and some of them are also here in the area back here. So, um, we very much appreciate this opportunity to speak to you this evening. Um, given the ten-minute limit, we all got together and the points that I'm gonna go over are a compilation of all of the points that we'd like to make. So I know that they have the opportunity to also add at the public part later, but this kind of is representative of all of us. Alright, just gonna skip ahead because of some of the background that has already been covered. I don't wanna redo that. So I just, I do wanna say that, um, oh, the prior project that Rachel mentioned, I mean, I've been, um, involved in some of the proposals that this developer has been making for this land area since, um, twenty twenty-two. And so when that project was proposed as a zoning exception originally, um, before the code change, we also opposed that height, uh, exception at that time. We didn't know as much about the process as we do now, otherwise we probably would have done something a little more formal. But, um, I do wanna just say that, uh, we have been educating ourselves about Blueprint Boise. So we're not ignorant to what the, you know, what we're trying to achieve in our community here, and we're very much in support of that. Uh, we don't know as much about all of the particulars of the zoning code, but it's our opinion that the zoning, the Design Review Committee's approval of this prog- project did not take into consider, uh, consideration parts of the code, the development code in particular, eleven oh one oh three point one and eleven oh one oh three point four. So you have already heard that it's this, the height, the scale and the density of this project negatively impacting the president, present residents, and it's so inconsistent with the character of our neighborhood. Um, yeah, I know we said that we would prefer to have this limited to three stories in height, and I understand that with the rezoning, um, that would require an exception. And while we know that's possible, you know, I guess I just wanna put forth, if it was four stories on the Federal Way sto- side and three stories on the Pico side, that would be less egregious than I think the five stories and four stories. And for the reasons that, um, I'm gonna state as follows. Our houses are, uh, five in, um, single-family homes on Pico Street and the one at the end of the block has like, I think, three apartments in it, so it's a little bigger. They're nine hundred square feet. They're setback twenty feet from the road. Our parcels are about point one seven acres. So very small homes. They were built in the nineteen forties. Pico is thirty street, thirty feet wide, that street. So even if they're, which they are intending to widen it by three feet, if you measure, and I did, from my front door to where it would start, that's sixty-five feet from my front door is gonna be a building rising up four stories on my side, you know, and it's, it's the entire block. It's a big chunk of building, just the entire block on the Pico side. So it's, uh, it's very inconsistent with our homes and our neighborhood. So again, for perspective, and this is a little corny, I understand it, but I drive a, a RAV four. It's fifteen feet long. It's a very common car. You guys have probably seen it on the street. That distance from my front door to where that building is gonna start is about four car lengths of my car. That is very small distance. Um, it's, like I said, in no way consistent with the character of the immediate or extended residential areas. It's documented in our prior public testimony that there are no multifamily apartments or townhomes or condominium developments in the immediate or extended depot bench area greater than three stories in height. Um, there are no developments also that have this near density for a hundred and ninety-four units. Even Commissioner Bowle agreed at one of the design commission hearings, I think the one in September, that the density, um, proximity and scale of this project is quote, quite jarring. He went on to say that the underlying zoning allows for it and therefore it was not a zoning issue. But we disagree with Commissioner Bowle and the other members of the Design Review Commission as regard to the zoning code that I mentioned before, the title eleven oh one oh three point one and eleven oh one oh three point four. And with regard to some of the, um, concerns we had about privacy, noise, overshadowing and traffic, with regard to overshadowing, given the complex is proposed for five stories, it's directly east of our homes on Pico Street. Um, it's gonna reduce the amount of direct sunlight and that the landscape and the homes are gonna receive. With regard to overshadowing, Commissioner Marsh did ask the developer at the September hearing whether any shade studies were conducted, and the developer simply stated, no shade studies were conducted. In terms of privacy, I mean, obviously the residents of Pico Street will be most impacted, but there's also gonna be significant impact to the residents at Mesa Vista Drive, and that's directly across Federal Way um, to the east of this building. The backyard privacy of the residents at Mesa Vista will be nonexistent under the direct line of sight from the east-facing apartment units, particularly on the upper floors. Quiets cur- Pico is currently a very quiet street with relatively little vehicle or pedestrian traffic. The developer submitted estimates that the complex will generate eight hundred and eighty additional vehicle trips per day on Pico, Cootenay and Federal Way. And with regard to that, in, on Pico Street alone, that would mean over a five hundred percent increase in vehicle traffic relative to today's current volume on Pico Street. And while that may be within the limits of ADA County Traffic Management, it does not take into consideration the direct and profound impact this is gonna have on the residents of Pico Street and the surrounding areas. The frequency and volume of noise will increase, not only from the vehicles, but from increased pedestrian traffic. And another factor is light pollution. This may seem like a small factor, but headlights shining directly into the homes at the bend of Pico Street. Um, even if just fifteen percent of those eight hundred and eighty vehicle trips a day enter Pico from Federal Way after nightfall, that's a hundred and thirty vehicles shining lights directly into the windows of these homes that, as I said, are just twenty feet off the road. Um, as I noted in the memorandum of written support for the application for appeal, we did, uh, circulate a petition among our neighbors. Uh, we are not the only ones who are in opposition of this development. The, to date, we have three hundred and forty signatures from Depot Bench and surrounding neighbors who are in favor of the height being limited on this building. Again, our proposal was three stories. I would put forth today that I think even four stories on the Federal Way side and three stories on the Pico side would be better than what's currently proposed. Um, in addition to the zoning code, um, uh, the portions of the zoning code that, that I mentioned previously, I do wanna also point out that there's similar sentiments that exist that are reflected in the Depot Bench Neighborhood Association Plan. And that exists as part of the guidance and vision of the community development for Blueprint Boise. And it's our understanding that those neighborhood plans, as well as the comp plan, has not been repealed, so that is still part of the consideration in, in addition to the zoning code. The DBNA plan, as viewed on the city's website, describes many descriptors for the vision of development, including development that is compatible with existing neighborhood and does not adversely impact the privacy, property values, or quality of life of surrounding residents. And so it's our assertion that disregard for our aforementioned concerns that this is also transgress- transgressive of the DBNA sanctioned, uh, plan that's sanctioned by the city. I would also like to know kind of more in a kind of a personal, I think this is something I'm more personally experienced. At our May twenty twenty-four neighborhood meeting, Mr. Mansfield solicited feedback about this project, and there were a couple Pico Street residents that inquired about whether the developer would consider purchasing our property and maybe, um, incorporating that into their design so that they could have like the whole street to themselves and it could just be more of a complex. And he said he would take it back to, uh, for consideration, but we never heard back from them about the viability of that option. I think it's noteworthy that the residents is on the western side of Pico back up the main Union Pacific railroad tracks. And during the November review, uh, meeting, Mr. Mansfield alluded to the, uh, general consensus regarding the difficulty of developing property along railroad lines in the state of Idaho. I mean, it's, you know, we're left to presume that he is likely aware that other developers may similarly not be interested in developing the land on which our properties reside, which leaves us as the current owners essentially at the mercy of what gets approved around us. In fact, when that earlier project at the south end of the block was, um, at issue, that was late twenty twenty-two, early twenty twenty-three, I attended a public meeting at the downtown library to learn more about the proposed zoning. And at the time, I asked the question, should the new zoning be approved? Would I be able to pursue business development of my property? For example, dog daycare, if you're gonna build a bunch of apartments around me, that would be a great business to have there. And I was told likely not. It's probably unlikely in our current housing market that I would get approval to eliminate existing housing for non-housing purposes. So in effect, my options would be limited in terms of my ability to pursue business development of my property, regardless of the type of development that had been approved to my detriment in the area surrounding my home. So I would say that this is in no way consistent with the guidance or vision of the Neighborhood Association Plan, um, that development, that, that we should be looking at development that is compatible with the existing neighborhood and does not adversely impact the privacy, property values, or quality of life of surrounding residents. We thank you for your time and consideration of the issues and concerns we've raised in our testimony today.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I guess I do have a quick question.
Sure, Karen.
Can you just remind me of the steps along, over here?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, yeah, um, could you just remind me of the steps along the way that you've testified at this point? So um, in front of council several years ago, um, planning and zoning before that, planning and zoning again?
So the, it's my recollection is that the original project that was for a hundred and twenty units was a planning and zoning, um, uh, consideration for a height exception. And then in, uh, for the new project, the first, uh, the first, uh, hearing that I was aware of was the Design Review Commission hearing, September eleventh.
Mm-hmm.
And then they had a work session and subsequent, uh, meeting in November.
Great. And you testified at the meeting in November?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. We will now hear from the Neighborhood Association. Mr. Pickett?
Maybe I'll stay. Um, for the record, Jim Pickett, thirty-five oh one Windsor Drive, Boise, Idaho. Um, I've been with the Depot Bench Neighborhood Association for, uh, far too long, uh, fifteen years. Uh, and have been in front of, uh, planning, zoning and view several times. Um, I'll open with a question for you to ponder. How many five-story buildings are there on the bench? I count two. One is the Boise Depot and, um, the historic tower there. And the other is the business building currently housed at the Catholic Arch I S E at the Viewpoint Business Center, which is just, um, about a half mile from this location of this project. That's well over half the central bench. That's well over half the central bench comprehensive planning area. Why is that the case? Because buildings of this size do not fit with the character of the largely residential areas of the bench. This development, which spans over 450 feet along Federal Way and has the equivalent of four, one and a half football fields would dwarf the surrounding houses to the west and east of the development and the Mesa Vista area across Federal Way. The project, as Karen notes, would substantially increase activity on Pico Street and would adversely impact those owners' property values and their daily lives. However, I'd like to also point out a very strange finding when looking at the rezoning map for the Depot Bench Neighborhood boundaries. All the LO zones, when we moved to the modern zoning code, all the LO parcels that had any sort of residential component abutting them in the old code got moved to MX1 zones, except seven parcels that I count. The six houses that are on Pico Street and the project that we're talking about. Why was that? How was that decision made? And why was that decision made? Seems very odd that this parcel got zoned this way. And after thinking about it for a bit, maybe you'll think that too. As you know, the MX1 zone would limit building heights for this development to 45 foot limit. I was here in front of planning, I believe in front of planning and zoning just a few years ago, testifying, that the Verve Student Housing Project, just down the hill at Protest from this project was too tall as proposed as a four-story project. The Verve project is essentially the same size footprint as the project that you have before you today. The area around the Verve is very similar to this proposed project. It immediately is surrounded by a mix of residential housing and various types, various types on a busy intersection. It is zoned MX2, again, which has a 45 foot height limit. That project ultimately was approved and built as a three-story complex with underground parking. Again, another example that this project is too tall for the neighborhood and the current zoning may not be correct. We submit that the project parcels and Pico Street houses were miszoned in the rewrite. And the Design Commission should have corrected that oversight during the approval process. Here, hence our support of the appeal. Finally, I think Karen mentioned this, but I'll, I'll quote one of the same items, goals from the modern zoning code, 11 dot 13, 11 dash 01 dash 03, item four. The goal is to protect the character of the residential institutional business employment and natural areas. Approving the proposed development as designed today does not meet, does not protect the character of the neighborhood. It changes it dramatically. This development does not fit the aesthetics of the current neighborhood. And just because the code allows a building of this height in the zone, doesn't mean it fits the neighborhood. Although it was written a while ago, the Depot Bench Neighborhood Association Plan is still a part of Blueprint Boise and the Comprehensive Plan. A building with a vertical profile similar to the Crescent Room condos or perhaps the Theodore condos that are, that just were built at Emerald and Roosevelt with multiple setbacks, setbacks from the street would better integrate into the neighborhood than this big box design. As far as protecting natural areas from goal four, this project would be highly visible from a variety of areas in the Boise foothills as its mass will dominate the federal rim skyline, not like no other project. As it stands today, approval of this building design goes against, directly against zone war of the zoning code. A reworked design with a better transition to a neighborhood to the west, starting with lower boundaries along Pico Street would be a great start to meeting that goal. As others have mentioned, this project's had a bit of a journey. It was a slightly more palatable project as a hundred-ish unit development under the old zoning code. Now it's almost a 200 unit project spanning the entire length of Pico and Federal Way along there, along the border. It certainly doesn't fit the neighborhood. As others have, I've expressed my concerns to the developer several times early in the process. So in closing, the DBNA supports the neighbor's appeal and asks council to either send this project back to the Design Review to adjust the zoning for this parcel as well as, as well as have greater setbacks included in the project elevations to make a better transition to the neighborhood. I also remind you that during the zoning code approval, that there was a review that was promised as the zoning code moved on. I think this project begs the question of whether these kinds of projects are really conducive to keeping the character of the neighborhood. And I thank you for your time and stand for any questions.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Okay, first up, I've got Victoria Purdy. What? Oh, wait. Who? Oh my goodness, I am so sorry. Come on up. I jumped right to the Neighborhood Association after hearing from Karen, but the applicant needed to go. I'd ask that you stick with what you plan to testify on and, and leave responses for rebuttal.
Madam Mayor, that sounds fantastic.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Jimmy.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name's Ethan Mansfield, representing Hawkins Companies. The original applicant, address is 855 West Broad Street, Boise, Idaho, 83702. Rachel, would you mind pulling up my presentation, please, before we, I guess?
And then Ethan, there's a clicker. I just asked you to click yourself.
Oh, absolutely. I would love to do that. So before I start, I would just like to bring up something that Karen Moore, the appellant, mentioned about the Comprehensive Plan. And I'm sure you're all familiar, but just as a reminder, as context to couch this discussion about zoning, I'm really going to focus in on the zone here. The Comprehensive Plan is used as a guiding document to guide things like future rezones, to guide the question of what zone are we going to apply to a particular property? When a zoning is, exists on a property, that zone rules that property's destiny. Those are the rules by which developers make decisions about what and how and how much and how high to build on the property. So I'll be a brief. I think Rachel did a great job thoroughly exploring all of the issues surrounding the appeal. And we, we really agree with her analysis. And I'll rip through my slides as soon as they, I guess it's just this TV that's not working, so I'll use this TV. So you know, you've seen the site, it's about 2.3 acres. In 2023, December 1st, was a big day for the city of Boise. That's when the new zoning code was adopted. So this section of this, this small piece of the city became MX3. That was a reflection of the city's policy objective to allow more housing within city limits, specifically concentrated along arterials, specifically in places just like this. So the Comprehensive Plan obviously informed the rezone of the entire city into certain zones to reflect the city's goals. That process hopefully took into account neighborhood plans, which are adopted as part of Blueprint Boise, the Comprehensive Plan. And where there is some conflict, as a reminder, the city zoning code is the document that guides, that specifies what sort of development can exist where. So that's what we use to make a decision about this property. But we didn't just use the zoning code. As you'll see shortly, we used other factors to make our decision. So I'm going to run through this table really quickly. The maximum height of the MX3 zone, what we are entitled to construct is a building up to 70 feet tall. Our project is 59 feet to the Parrot Pit Peak on the five-story side. There is a stairwell that extends upward to 64 feet. So we are about a story below the maximum height. Why did we choose to do this? Well, the initial rezone and height exception allowed for 59 feet. So what we did is we thought to ourselves, well, look, we don't want to bait and switch here. We simply acquired or, you know, have the northern parcel under contract. And we now want to build a project that encompasses both parcels. But we don't want to blow it up, add another story if the project works the way it does. So we maintained consistency with the previous approval, brought the five stories northward, maintained four stories on the Pico side so that we could respect what was previously approved. Again, the new zone allows 70 feet, we are less than that. Similarly, we respected the existing density. So it was about 82 or 83 in the previous approval. The MX3 zone allows by right as much density as fits within the other elements of the code, right? Height limit, open space requirements, amenities. And as you heard from Rachel, the Design Review and staff both agreed that this project met all of those elements of code. This piece was mentioned earlier, the minimum height without an alternative form approval. We would need to go to Planning and Zoning Commission and basically say, we need an exception from your MX3 zone to build something smaller in this location if we were to go anywhere under four stories. And I don't have specific clarity on this, but in earlier conversations with Comprehensive planners, the idea was if there's three stories on the property, you have to go seek this alternative form. I, that might be a good question for staff. I don't know if we could build something that's four stories that steps down to three and not seek the alternative form. Frankly, we don't want to do that because as you can see, our project meets all of the requirements of the zone and meets all the requirements of Design Review Guidelines. So let's talk a little bit about access. These next two pieces right here are critical because these are the two places where we did deviate from standards with ACHD and the city of Boise. And the reason we did that was to respect the neighborhood's requests for a more limited impact to the project. Let's talk about access first. We asked ACHD for a write-in, write-out on Federal Way to minimize the impact to Pico Street. So what that looks like is we have one access on Pico and a write-in, write-out on Federal Way, rather than having two accesses on Pico Street. What did we do with the places where we would have had those, that other access? We turned it into front doors that are accessed from Pico Street, a front door, a front porch to make it look and feel more like a residential neighborhood. So ACHD granted that policy. And they granted an exception to that policy. Now, you know, if they hadn't, we would have put two big old parking garage mouths on Pico Street and that would have been what we approved. Parking is another one where we are parked above the city of Boise's minimum parking requirement. To do that, we committed to the city's sustainability incentives, which is required for a project like this to increase above the minimum parking requirement. We did that because one of the things we heard from the neighborhood was, I don't want you to blow up my street with all of the people trying to park for the residential development. We heard them loud and clear, we're parked at 1.66 parking spaces per unit, which still isn't grossly above and beyond, but we feel is adequate to both serve the development, protect the neighborhood from over-parking, and also respect the city of Boise's desires to not have a giant field of parking. One of the reasons is we're, we're putting the parking underground. So not only does it minimize, there's no surface parking, but it also protects, right? It allows us to do the next thing on this list. So the city code, the MX3 zone requires 60% active uses on street frontages. So as a reminder, this project has four street frontages. It is fronted on every side by a street. So already 60% is much greater than, say, the Fowler where there are three or the hard, well, I guess the hard task for, you get my point, right? So there are a lot of things that if it's built on a half a block or a third of the block or a quarter of a block, they're going to have two, maybe three street frontages. This property has four street frontages and we have 70% active uses, including 2,000 square feet of retail. Couple different lobby entrances, and I'm happy to walk through the site plan if we need to, but I, I think you guys are probably familiar with the project. So given all that, I'd also like to remind you of the appeal grounds. So the project height was one of the biggest grounds for appeal. As a reminder, that's not in the purview of the Design Review Committee. Similarly, project density is not in the purview of the Design Review Committee. Traffic. We actually sought and were approved, traffic, like an exception to limit the amount of traffic traveling through the neighborhood on Pico Street. Similarly, we sought and approved an exception to increase parking within the parking garage and build an underground parking structure to facilitate some of the park to accommodate some of the parking concerns. So the question that I would ask is if the Design Review Committee is not allowed to consider height and density, how could they have committed an error by not considering height and density? So in other words, we explicitly disallow the Design Review Committee from considering the very things that were appealed. So we can't look at that and say, you guys made an error by not considering it because they were explicitly instructed not to consider it. So in sum, I would say thank you. Please deny the appeal. Uphold this development. I'm personally very excited about it. I live nearby. I live on the Boise bench. I think adding people to the community is a wonderful thing. And as a Mr., well, I can't address Mr. Pickett's comments. I'll save them for later. Thank you very much. And I've got tons of slides if you have any questions about specifics of the project.
Thanks. All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to Ms. Purdy. I'm sorry about that. And then after Ms. Purdy, we will have Hannah, is it Cronba? Cronba, Cronba? Great. Anybody else here planning on testifying? If you testified at the last hearing, you're able to do that. Okay, well, I'll talk about that then in a second. Ms. Purdy, welcome.
Hi, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Everybody has spoken very well about this project on, on behalf of Pico. I'm at 1011 Pico Street. What hasn't been mentioned is, is security for people just driving up and down. I'm very concerned about young people renting these apartments, wanting to go to college. Now, it's going to be a one-way road. They're going to come, have to come off on Federal Way. Federal Way is 45 miles an hour. These 18, 19-year-old kids are going to be, well, if they get that far because I don't know what Ada County Highway District's going to do about the ice and snow because it's, it's going to, with all the shade, it's going to be slippery than I could even imagine. If they're not sliding into our houses, they're going to be sliding onto Federal Way. But I'm concerned about them trying to make a left turn down the hill. That's a very short distance. I, I don't have it measured. I don't know exactly what it is, but that's a huge concern for me. Also, the traffic that's going to be backed up, if there is a train, they're coming up Protest Hill. 800 cars per day, over 800 cars are going to be going down our little street on Pico. They're going to be backed up completely if there's a train coming by. That, it, it's just going to be a traffic disaster. Not to mention, I'm really concerned about people getting hurt, killed. Those are pretty much the, besides what was already mentioned. Those are my huge concerns. This is the safety.
Thank you. All right. Hannah, is it Cronba or Cronba? Cronba, great.
Thank you for your time and for hearing our appeal. I would like to echo Karen's sentiments that she has already shared on our behalf. The thing that I would like to bring forward was when Mr. Mansfield shared the MX image. The part that stuck out to me, and I hope it stuck out to you as well, was the amount of yellow and then the single area that was red for the MX3. AKA, that was a lot of residential area and to have just this single amount of like MX3, whereas on the other side of a lot of the residents, you would also see that residual red area that is along Vista, where there's a lot of existing businesses already present, where you would expect as a neighbor building there, like, yes, I'm going to be up against businesses and that's an expected piece. My second thing is that Mr. Mansfield brought forward was, it is not part of the Design Review Committee's it is not part of the design review committee's process to consider height and density. My ask is then who do we appeal to for that portion of this? Because that has not been brought forward or presented to us as an option to consider. And I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Okay, on them, on the issue of testifying, because this is an appeal, you have to have testified or sent in an email about the item. And so if you didn't do either of those, you're not considered a party of record. We, we can't, I'm so sorry, I wish that we could. It's the standards that we have for appeals. I'm really sorry about that, especially since you came all the way down here, you and your family. But I wish it was different, but that's, that's the way the appeals process works. But thank you for being here. There are, so I just want to make sure that no other parties of record intended to testify tonight. Oh, great, come on up. And Alexandra Monge, you are on the list.
Thank you, yes. I'm Alexandra Monge, I live at twenty-two twenty-two West Kidney Street. I disagree with the assertion in the appeal that this project was inadequately considered by the design review commission. I was present at that meeting and saw the design review commission deliberate over it extensively. And I believe that they acted in alignment with code regulations, master plan, and manuse law. I have a little bit of a different perspective than my neighbors. When I moved to Boise in twenty-fourteen to start my adult life away from my childhood hometown, I sensed not only that this community was growing, but it was also a place that was welcoming that growth and new residents like myself. And so since then, I have been excited about the new housing that has come downtown. And as a resident on the bench, I'm excited to see more residents join me in that neighborhood. I think that not only will this project not have a negative impact on the overall welfare of our neighborhood, I think it will positively impact it. The additional eyes on the street will create a better sense of safety for me as I walk and bike home at night on that corner, there's the canal and the park, dark corners on three sides. So having a dense housing project here, I think will add both light and like presence there. That would be welcome from my perspective. I also note that another area of concern has been noise. But I actually think that the project will reduce noise for me and my neighbors. Cars are by far the loudest things in cities. And this project will actually buffer noise from Federal Way for Pico Street and my townhome complex. It will also reduce vehicular miles traveled. It's well-known in planning and transportation research that infill multifamily development reduces our reliance on vehicles and gives people the option to make other mobility choices. I also want to note that I think that it's in character with the bench and the neighborhood. Down the street is the Identity Multifamily Housing Project, that's five stories. There's the Betty on Vista and Targi, that's four stories. I think that the verb is too short. I think it would create a better psychological street environment if it actually were four, five, or six stories tall. Because Boise is a little bit of a wider street. And I think just like psychologically, creating that frame for the street is a good urban environment. And generally, I also want to like pose a question here as we are looking at code that if council agrees with my perspective and the perspective of city staff, that I think that this appeal process is actually harmful to our community by creating a false sense of hope that there will be changes to this project when it's something that adheres to code, it adheres to the design guidelines. And Catherine Levine Epstein in her book Neighborhood Defenders talks about the outsized impact that that can have. Thank you.
All right, is anybody online that is a party of record that intended to testify? Okay. Then I will, now we go the opposite direction, right? First the applicant and then the appellant. Great, I will hear now from the, and just making sure that nobody that's party of record has changed their mind. Okay, you are welcome to come up for rebuttal and then we will have the appellant close us out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I don't have too much to add, but there were, there was a couple, there was a really good question about if this is outside of the purview of the design review committee, then who do we appeal to? And I think that hits at a central tenet of the reason that the zoning code was changed by the city. The intent of this code was to allow projects like this to happen without going through an extensive public hearing process. And as Alexandra mentioned, you know, it can still happen, but perhaps it's not the best venue for it because the findings now-
Madam Mayor, if we could just pause for a second. I realize this is an emotional issue for a lot of folks. I know that you live nearby and it's very personal. I would just ask that you save comments and conversations until after the meeting or someone else isn't talking. I want to make sure that I pay attention to every single person the same way. So if we can keep the comments towards after, that would be great, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Halliburton, thanks very much. That's all I really wanted to say. I could, you know me, I could talk for forty minutes about this, but I'm not going to. I'll keep it short. My request would be, look, if you think the zone is wrong, there is a rezoning process that we can all go through. It takes between six months and a year. We chose not to do that process because the zone entitles, allows what we would like to construct. We're going through the design review process. To the appellants, there is an opportunity when a rezone happens to become involved in the rezoning process. There was extensive public outreach that the city did. I think the city actually did a fantastic job on conducting public outreach when they did do the zoning code rewrite. That is the moment in time to get involved with these major zoning changes. And I would hope that that is the point in time that the city accepts the feedback, considers it. And that's all I've got, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Is it you, Karen? Great.
Welcome back.
Boy, that's a lot of stuff to consider. I for one appreciate that we still have the opportunity to come before you with an appeal. The idea that the public would not have that opportunity is, I don't know, kind of offensive to me personally. I'm sure when you're looking at rezoning and trying to, you know, fulfill on the vision of the city, it is very difficult to consider all of the contingencies that might come up in particular neighborhoods. The parameters can't possibly consider all of that. And I think that's what the exception process is for. We've seen that in the prior project, the developer, you know, was okay with pursuing an exception, you know, in order to achieve something that they were looking for. So I think that if pursuing an exception to consider the particular parameters that we're dealing with, with this particular neighborhood, is not out of the realm of reasonability. I did want to say that this appeal wasn't based just on height, scale, and density. It was just how it would impact us. That was not considered by the design review commission. So I just want to, to clarify that. They just said that they didn't have any basis for commenting on height, scale, and density. But we were talking about the impact it was going to have to us, which they did not adequately address. So I just want to clarify that. And then Victoria mentioned young kids. And so I just also want to, there's been, we didn't really talk about that, but we've talked about it at other, at other hearings. You know, this project is right up the street from BSU. And I think initially, the developer indicated this is for empty nesters, the tech folks down at Micron. And I, I think the reality is, it's going to be a lot of students, you know, and I'm, we're not, it's not student housing. I understand that it doesn't have the parameters or design of some of the other student housing projects in town. But I think the reality is it's going to be a lot of students. Again, we're not objecting to that, students need places to live as well. But I think we're all aware that this will probably be fewer families and more groups of students coming together for housing in this particular location. That's just conjecture, but I think that is probably not too far off base. I also just wanted to mention, just to clarify, that commercial building that's to the north of this project is also just one story. Fade's Barber Shop is in there, there's like a, like a little esthetician spa. There's a woman, I think, that lives over in the Mesa Vista area who has like her little art studio there. There is a very one-story small building. So yes, is there commercial there? There is, but again, not anything to the scale that we're talking about with this project. So thanks, I appreciate the opportunity to speak again.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I'm going to close.
For staff?
Yes, okay. Or do you want, did you want, do you have questions for staff?
No.
Okay, then I'd like to close the public hearing.
Unless other people do.
I plan to close the public hearing, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I move that council deny the appeal on DRH twenty-four dash two-five-zero and uphold the decision of the design review commission to approve construction of a five-story mixed-use building with one hundred and ninety-four residential units, retail space, amenities, and structured parking at one zero nine five South Federal Way in an MX three mixed-use active zone.
Second.
Madam Mayor, if I could speak to that motion? Thank you for coming out tonight, everyone. I know these types of changes in our neighborhoods can be difficult and uncomfortable and may not be consistent with the residents of Pico Street and what they see for their neighborhood. That being said, what we had before us tonight was an appeal on, of a design review commission decision. And we have to look at what our code says with regards to that. And what, what was not discussed tonight were design standards. I'm looking at all the design standards in our code and, and almost none of those things were, were brought up tonight. We talked a lot about height, a lot about density. And not only do, can I not find an error in the design review commission's decision, I actually think they're legally prohibited from considering the things that were raised on appeal, which include height and density. As was mentioned by staff, the the section of code eleven-five three-point-four B says that they're specifically prohibited from requiring reduction in density, floor area ratio, or other regulations set forth in a specific table. That table has those height minimums. So I, I think they're prohibited by code, they are prohibited by code from considering the things that were raised on appeal. So I, I do not believe they could have made an error in that. So for those reasons, I would deny the appeal.
Madam Mayor, I'll add, I'm encouraged at how the neighbors have organized. You know, it takes a lot of commitment and dedication to turn out, to attend all of these meetings and connect with your fellow neighbors. This use and density is allowed within the zoning code, which was approved into law before my time on city council, but I did support it. I supported it because thousands of Boisians had their impact on, on creating that code and gave public feedback during that time. So there was a question about how do you, how would you object to that code? There was a very extensive public outreach process during the creation of that code. And then I appreciated the comment about having learned so much about the process from Ms. Moore and about our code. And to add on to that, we, Blueprint Boise is our, you know, is the guiding light to create the code, but ultimately, we are held responsible to the development code. And that has to drive our decisions. And ideally, Blueprint Boise helps to drive that development code into law. Tonight, we were asked to evaluate an appeal, which we have a very narrow criteria to consider. And I have not been convinced that this decision was made without substantial evidence, which I think Ms. Moore was what the final argument was there, was that you didn't feel that the commission provided enough support for their decision on the potential impact to the neighborhood. And so I hope that these new residents, that whether they were born in Boise or whether they are currently living in Boise and choose to make this new building their home, I hope that they are welcomed by you as neighbors. And I hope that they feel a similar ownership eventually to your, to the neighborhood that you all feel. And maybe they'll show up to the next meeting and protest the next development with you. I hope they join the neighborhood association and that they attend meetings and lean into the process. And I hope that they enjoy living here for as long as they are happy as, as they wish for all of the rest of us to.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Lucy.
Yes, Katnir Wiltz. Thank you, hey, thanks to all the neighbors who showed up tonight. I know that it, it's your time and I appreciate it. And it's very clear that this is something that you've been watching and paying attention to for a long time. I'm going to support the motion because it is allowed. And the source of truth here is the zoning code, and the zoning code allows this. It's an area of the zoning code that I'm, that I'm uncomfortable with and forcing some of this density, but it is truly in our code. And so because it is legal, I will be supporting the motion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I was about to say something very similar to Councilmember Wiltz. I think that if you're going to come here to a meeting, I think, you know, you, we owe it to you to explain some of our decision-making. And the first thing I want to say is that you did a good job testifying and Karen for being nervous, good job. The reality is, is that you were testifying on a rezone. Those were your arguments, it was all about a rezone, not design review. But that wasn't what we were hearing here. And one of you called that out, that that's because you didn't have the ability to testify for a rezone. So you're making rezone arguments in a design review hearing, which we can't hear, we, we can't consider. And the reality is when we do have something zoned, people can build by right what that is. So if it's zoned for single-family housing, they can build a single-family house on that. They don't have to tell their neighbors, they can just do it, and they don't have to get it approved through the city or city council and planning and zoning. It's all able to be done with staff. So if it says MX three on there, whatever is allowed in MX three is what can come forward. And it doesn't typically require all of the same public input with those different steps of the process. So I do want to recognize that, like, this is a big change, but the things that you're arguing about were zoning-related issues, not design review-related issues. And this application is a design review application. So again, I appreciate you for coming out here tonight, I'll be supporting the motion as well. Our design review team, I think they looked at the standards and they made the right calls within those standards.
Madam Mayor. I also want to speak to the neighbors along that vein. I think unfortunately tonight, what we heard from you was a square peg that needed to go in this round hole. And, and I get that, and I get the frustrations, and I get this, you know, the fear that a new development might cause. I would say, you know, this borders basically District Four as well. You know, this is an area of change. Someone mentioned, you know, the, the yellow that surrounds this red. And I would, I would ask you to consider what this might look like in two hundred years, right? So the, the zoning code is a living code. It hasn't always been that way. It went a really long time without an update. And that's happened in a lot of communities and it's caused a lot of problems in a lot of communities that actually cost all of us a lot when you talk about sprawl and getting people where they live. And I think being my day job at Boise State and I see students and faculty every day, I think you'll have probably just as many faculty living here as you will have students. And with, with parking sold out on campus, I think they'd be crazy to drive to campus. That's a great walk. You know, I do, I do think that, I do hope that you'll open up your hearts to those that, that do, that do choose to, that find this affordable for their means and choose to join you. As someone who grew up in Boise, and I see a lot of my generation and others that are struggling to be able to stay here. And, you know, that tears at families, not being, you know, having to drive an hour across the valley to see your grandkids or whatnot. And so I think it's really important that we continue to, to see these things. But I want to speak to that, just to hope that we'll be able to, to find those opportunities to see these people at church or in your school communities or whatnot. And I want to thank you for testifying and sharing your emotions and feelings because it is, it is hard and I understand that. So thank you for spending your time with us.
Madam Mayor. Like my fellow councilmembers, I want to thank you very much for coming out. Your voice makes a difference. And Karen, you did a fantastic job presenting this. As was mentioned, we have a very narrow criteria that we have to abide by when we're looking at overturning in these appeals. And as Councilmember Wiltz mentioned, what it really comes down to is that zoning code, that MX three. It's interesting that there is MX three that's right next to, that's inclusive of single-family housing where you live and have lived probably for a long time. This will be an impact. This will be an impact, undoubtedly, a big impact. And again, with our zoning code of the MX three, that is what's allowed. Looking at this intensely and what our standards are that we have to consider and appeal, there's no error in the decision, unfortunately, that the design commission had made. And so I'll be supporting that appeal tonight.
Right, I don't vote on these, but I did want to just say thank you for coming out. And, you know, Karen, you mentioned at the beginning you were nervous. We hear that often from folks that are here and we're all just regular people talking about the place that we love. You did a great job organizing your neighbors, bringing the issues and ideas that you had. I appreciate all of you for what you've, what you do for Boise. And with that, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the rule. After, afterwards, you're welcome to have a conversation, we just can't from here.
Dead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Horless.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Clerk, or sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. We're adjourned.